Yeah, in the back we do.
You're up, Dan.
I am, Dave. One on the floor.
I may not reach you.
It's okay, I'll go.
We can trade places if you're running low. Or be a little bit dumber. Do you have a full charger?
Thank you. It's not long enough. I think that's what it is.
I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission on Monday, February 14th, 2022 at 7:01 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Buck, could you please take the role?
Commissioner Halsiger, present. Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Eke?
Here.
Commissioner Ronan?
Present.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Present.
Mayor Pirscherbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum. We will continue with the meeting. Today, we have the pleasure of being introduced to Mount Pleasant's newest police officer, Darryl Johns, Director Loria. I give you the floor for the introduction and the swearing-in ceremony.
If you want to stand right here for me, okay? And if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Darryl Johns, do solemnly swear.
I, Darryl Johns, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend and uphold.
That I will support and defend and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the state of Michigan.
The laws of the state of Michigan.
And the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
And the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Is this mic work? Thank you, everybody, for coming here today. It's been a long journey for me, and it's a very exciting day to be here, finally. And I'm excited to continue that journey here in the community of Mount Pleasant. I have an amazing team over here to help me succeed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Officer Johns. At this time, we're going to entertain any additions or deletions to the agenda. I would like to have item 11 removed from the agenda completely and set to be reviewed at the City Commission's March 14th meeting. Is there any other additions or deletions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
I need a second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Eke and a second by Commissioner Bush. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, at this time, we will open the floor for public comment on agenda items. Have we received any emails for public comment?
No, we have not.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address before you make your comment. If you're joining the meeting by Zoom, use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Once you are recognized, you'll be moved in so that you can be heard and make your comment. Also, please state your name and address before your comment, and you will have three minutes to state your comment. I do not see anyone in our audience here. Do we have anyone in the Zoom audience?
No one has their hand.
The last part of that was unclear. Where Commissioner Ronan asked if that the Planning Commission review and give options to the City Commission on the drive-through stacking requirements. I think we have to have a little more context and state it was because this request was made because of the ZBA decision. If we could add that in there, I'd appreciate it.
Due to ZBA?
Oh, no, Dad.
Thank you. All right. Manager Dissents, can you please review the consent calendar?
Absolutely. This evening's consent calendar includes approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held January 24, 2022, approval of the minutes of the closed session held January 24, 2022, receive recommended text change to section.
Along with the. That's like having my GPS interrupt me when I'm talking.
Turn left.
Yes. With the change that I requested in the minutes, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
We should do a roll call for that with the amendment.
Okay, so we need a roll call for the amendment?
Well, because it's the consent agenda and it wasn't amendment, I would recommend a roll call.
Okay, but we still have to have a motion.
Yes.
Okay.
I move we accept the consent calendar with the deletion of previously mentioned item.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Bush and a second by Commissioner Eke. Okay, Clerk Buck, can you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Halsiger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Pirscherbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. All right, so now we are at our first of our two public meetings, public hearings tonight. This public hearing is on Special Assessment District 1-22 rule. Manager Dissents, can you give the commission a bit of an overview?
Absolutely. Right. So the public hearings for this evening, as well as the accompanying resolutions, were before the reconstruction of two alleys that are in our downtown. The alleys of the L-shaped alley in the block of Michigan, Main, Broadway, and University, and the alley between Michigan and Broadway from University to 115 feet east of Franklin. Funding for these projects was included in our budget for this year. The proposed special amendment would place 50% of the cost on the property owners who are on the alleyways, and then 50% of the cost will be paid by our capital improvements fund.
Right, thank you. If any member of the audience wishes to speak during this public hearing, please step to the podium and state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to make your statement. If you are a member of our Zoom audience, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining the Zoom by phone so you can be recognized and moved into the meeting for your statement. I will now open the public hearing. Do we have any emailed comments for this public hearing tonight?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the Zoom audience wishing to speak?
I'm moving in Robert Beckus.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for taking time to hear me today. Last time I was here in your last meeting, I spoke in regard to Special Assessment District 2-22. But timing-wise, I think I addressed my comments during the period reflecting 1-22, and I don't want to make that same mistake again, but frankly, again, I'm not familiar with your protocols, and I don't want to miss an opportunity to place my protest. Shall I continue?
Yes, you can continue.
Right, thank you very much. I continue to believe that the city's confusing the distinction between a property tax and a special assessment district. Special assessment district and special assessments are supposed to be focused on generating funds and allocating the associated expenses with properties that are specially benefited by the project. And we simply don't have that in this circumstance. There is no increased value as required by the Michigan Supreme Court in regard to the improvement with respect to my building that's located at 115 South University. This is an alleyway, as I mentioned last time I spoke with you, that is a primary entry point and exit point for your city parking lot. When we last spoke, I didn't mention the fact that although the city's parking lot may be exempt from property taxes, it's not exempt from special assessments, yet the way your assessment district is set up, your parking lot has the same charge that my building does. And to consider the uses and the benefits in comparison of one to the other, just it baffles me how there can be any concept of benefit in any type of proportionate way to the property that I own. As I indicated the last time, my property is a long, narrow building that fronts on University Street. We have no business function whatsoever that's on the alley side of the street. And so the notion that my neighbor to the south or any other people that utilize the parking lot for city downtown business, travel, and participation in activities down there shouldn't also participate in these expenses. Honestly, I just don't understand how it can possibly be that, you know, that my building gets assessed at almost $12,000, which is basically double anybody else on my district. And so, you know, I just think it's important that you make a distinction between what is appropriate for a property tax and what is appropriate for a special assessment district. And while there may be a trend to specially assessed in this manner, I think it's unconstitutional, and I think it's inappropriate, certainly in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckus. Are there any other comments?
No other hands.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for Commissioners to ask any questions or make any comments. Commissioner Asman?
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Beckus brings up a good point to me.
In the mic.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner, or excuse me, Mr. Beckus brings up a good point to me. Like, how was it decided who was assessed? If your property touches the alleyway, then that was the only criteria?
Yeah, probably to best address that and then maybe even go into how the amounts were assessed, I would have to call on our Finance Director, Mary Ann Kornack, who I know is joining us via Zoom. Mary Ann, would you be able to answer the Commissioner's question and then even just discuss very briefly the amount that was assessed per property and how that was calculated?
Yes, the special assessment is based on the front footage on the alley. So all the properties that butt the alley, it's based on the footage on the alley.
But is there a certain fixed cost for? Mary Ann, can you?
Yep, you take the total amount of the planned project and divide it over the total amount of front footage, and then everybody pays a proportional share of their amount of their building compared to the total front footage of the total project. And then you divide that over all the properties.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Halsiger?
I know in the past, we've monkeyed a little bit with the percentages based on what project is being considered. I remember that happening on Michigan Street when that project occurred. So I'm not sure that we're stuck with 50-50 as a percentage, or if it's too late to suggest another way to do that.
The special assessment was based on the percentage that was in the policy that was adopted by the City Commission in, what was it? Eight years?
Last year, I think.
Last year.
I think.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I think I may be making this up. Could you check on this? But I think it used to be 70-30, and what we did is we decreased it to 50-50. I have a home in the city that has an alley behind it. If I were going to have that redone, I believe I pay 70%, and the city pays 30. But we altered it for the commercial property downtown to just make it a little more doable or something. I don't know. That's my memory, but I'm not sure if I'm right, though. Is that correct?
That is correct. The policy had different percentages for residential versus commercial, and then there was also the policy addressed pedestrian lighting also.
Commissioner Eke?
Mr. Beckus, is Mr. Beckus still available to respond?
Commissioner Eke, can you move your microphone down?
Mr. Beckus says that there is no benefit to him. Sorry. Okay, thank you. From what I heard, Mr. Beckus say he indicates that there's no benefit to him. Am I to assume that his property or clients who enter his office don't really use that particular space? Because if he is not, if the business is not going to pick up a portion of the cost for fixing this particular area, then who does? And is his business the only business in this area? Are other businesses or properties assessed similar fees? Similar contributions? Basically, my question is, to what extent is this equitable? Because his argument is that it's not equitable. At least, that's what I heard, my interpretation of what he's saying. But if other properties are assessed similar fees, then what makes it inequitable? And if clients who are going into his business actually use that particular space, and it needs to be fixed or at least paved, then who picks up the cost for doing that?
I would say on Mr. Beckus's property, his property is unique, that his property, the side of his building, the long portion of his building butts the alley, where many of the others, it's the actual back of their building that assesses, hits the alley. So he's assessed 132 front foot when most of the others, other than the city parking lot, are between 22 and 66. Thank you.
That's interesting.
That doesn't make sense to me, I guess. Why, just because his building runs down the side of it, that he is assessed to that amount? In my opinion, I don't agree with.
Man? Yeah, it's an interesting, it's an interesting concept, actually, but, you know, so I'm going to complain as I usually do. So my house has an alley, and I put trash in it because the trash pickup is there. But I don't know that I've ever, and I maintain it, I mean, I, you know, like do the shrubs and stuff, but I don't know that I've ever used it on anything else. But yet, if I have to, if the alley is replaced, then I'm assessed the same amount as other people who may have a driveway entrance. So it is a thing throughout the city. I'm not, but maybe there is some possibility of coming up with a different model for.
Is that possible? Is there a different, I'm sorry if I spoke out of turn, I'm just curious.
I don't know if there is, you know, this is, we've always, even though we've changed the percentages, we did last year because we said, hey, this is quite a burden on the businesses. So we changed the percentages. I don't know if there's a way to change how we assess it so much. My concern is that, you know, we're digging, we're getting kind of in the weeds here with some of this stuff, right? The city has a lot of alleys. We have a lot of alleys in this city, and the city would go bankrupt if we, you know, fixed them all. And we're asking businesses and residents, when alleys are replaced, to help pitch in on that. I understand that, yeah, I mean, his business does run, the full, you know, the whole side of his building runs along that alley. And it does feel like it's a little excessive.
So it sounds like part of his argument, too, was that who uses that alley, who uses that parking lot? It seems like a lot of the assessment comes from the benefit of maybe having, oh, sorry. It seems like a lot of the benefit, or, sorry, now I'm off track. It seems like a lot of the benefit to the improvement on the assessment on the property has to do with access and like visual curb appeal and that sort of thing. I think that felt like the direction he was discussing. And if other people are using that shared alleyway, and there's no entrance to his building in particular, and it's city property, and it's like a shared access property, it does seem like there's a cause to look at whether or not that, just that frontage, which is not just for, you know, it's not just benefiting his building, could be looked at a different way.
Commissioner Halsiger?
Well, and the other point I'm noticing is that his assessment is twice what anyone else pays.
Yeah, and that's because the whole side of his building runs along the alley. What I'm wondering is, do we only assess, do we only do the special assessment for buildings? Or is there also property that may butt that alley but not be an actual building?
It's all buildings except for the city parking lot. And the city parking lot, as Mr. Beckus indicated, has the same front footage and is paying the same assessment as Mr. Beckus's building.
Okay.
And I might clarify that you are on the public hearing for 1-22?
Yes.
Mr. Beckus's property is actually in 2-22?
Yes.
Okay.
Good point.
Yep. But it's still, you know, very relevant because we need to understand how buildings are being assessed. And they're being assessed the same way, in either 1-22 or 2-22.
That's right.
Okay, so moving back to, you know, understanding how they're assessed. I understand Mr. Beckus's point, and I do give, you know, I have empathy for that. It's, you know, unfortunately, that is how we're assessing. That's how we're saying if your building is in this alley, we're going to look at how much of your building touches this alley, basically. But I do understand how it would be very frustrating to have that happen because he is paying more than any of the other buildings. But he also has, well, what is the building across from him?
The building across from him, there's two of them, actually, three of them. The Isabella Bank owns two, and then 332 is, I think there are three of them, Isabella Bank, just a moment. They have more Isabella Bank.
Okay. Okay, so Isabella Bank has three buildings across from him. Are they, is each building being assessed separately?
Yes, but the front, yes, but the front footage of all three of those add up to what he has.
Okay, so Isabella Bank is basically paying what he is paying?
Correct.
Okay. It's just separated by the fact that it's three buildings instead of one?
Correct.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Asman?
I just have one more. So I happened to talk to a business owner last week about his property. It doesn't fall, I believe it falls in the dash one. He's across, is it University? So he'd be to the west of Mr. Beckus's building. And he was just saying that his, going forward, he'd like to put some apartments in the upper part of his building, and to do so, he needs fire suppression to do that. in the upper part of his building, and to do so, he needs fire suppression to do that. And he said, um, it's something he looked into, and the majority of the cost was to tear up the alley, if you will, and, and run the water to, excuse me, to the building. So, um, I guess I have a question. If, is this possible for him to do if we redo this project this year? That we could, I guess I don't know if it's for you, Aaron, but is it possible that he could piggyback or whoever else might need this water suppression to piggyback on this project?
Staff's taking a look at that right now. We're running into a couple of hiccups just because of the size of the alley and some of the utilities that run through there and the water pressure off of University Street. We're looking at if there's a way to overcome those obstacles. So the jury's still out on that one, so to say. So there's the possibility. Can't make any promises there, but we are investigating if that's possible. If the city commission wanted to, we could still establish a special assessment district this evening here. We could look at that, and we can add that to the project if it becomes feasible, or, or come back to the city commission and just report one way or the other.
And my understanding is if we added, um, if we decided we were able to do the water, so, um, and then the buildings, would they be able to connect to it for their water suppression? It wouldn't, that cost would not be part of the special assessment.
That would have to be, the cost of that would have to be determined another way. So that wouldn't be part of the special assessment. If the city commission wanted to special assess that, we'd have to set up another special assessment district for that. Or we could look at another, number of other ways for funding that.
Okay. Commissioner Ronan.
How would, let's, if we, if we adopted that, what would that mean? In fact, if the commission tonight said, yes, let's look at that, and let's see what we can do with that, what are the implications of that?
Right now, no real implications or anything. Staff would take a look at the feasibility, come back to the city commission, make a report as to whether we can or can't do it, uh, come up with a estimated cost for that project, and then we would have to talk about how we want to pay for it.
Yeah, so if we, um, if we pass the, the role for this, um, the resolution five for this, we, we don't have to start anything until we understand what we may be able to do with the water.
That's correct.
Okay. And then nothing would be, payments or anything like that would not be collected until this, um, the pay, the alleyway has been started or completed.
That's correct.
Do I have to move that or something? I mean, or is that just something we?
Is there any more comments or questions before we move to a motion? All right, so is there a motion to approve?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the motion's for.
Well, we have to, um, it would be to approve resolution five.
Okay.
Um, to approve the role for that special assessment and set the payment terms for the special assessment. For special, for District 1-22.
Can I just ask a procedural question? And how about the investigation of the fire, the, you know, the fire suppression part? Is, are we also saying that that's gonna take place? Or is that a separate motion we have to do? Or is that an amendment to this?
You know, staff's already pretty well deep into it at this point. I could just take some of the head nods that I'm seeing in the room here as direction. That we'll go ahead and get that information to the city commission as soon as possible.
So you could make that motion for the adoption of the resolution five?
Unless someone else has a question.
Any other questions? Okay, so we're, we're looking at approval of, a motion for approval of, oh, Commissioner Alziger?
I move that we accept the resolution five to approve the role and set the payment terms for special assessment District 1-22.
All right, is there a second?
No second.
Commissioner Ake is second. Is there any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
No.
We need a roll call on a public hearing.
Oh, sorry, you're right. All right, so Clerk Val, please take a roll call.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
No.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Alziger?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Pirschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're at item 15, which is also a public hearing on the special assessment District 2-22 role. Manager of Dissents, I know that we've already kind of like gone over this. Is there anything you'd like to add before I open this public hearing?
Uh, nope. Everything that we've discussed so far between the cost share between the city and the property owners all remains the same as the last special assessment district we were discussing.
Okay. And to remind the commission, this special assessment district is the one from University to Franklin. Okay? If any member of the audience wishes to speak during the public hearing, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes for your statement. If you are a member of the Zoom audience, please use your raised hand feature or star nine to, if you're joining by phone, so you can be recognized and moved into the meeting for your statement. I'll know, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the Zoom audience that wishes to speak?
I'm gonna move in, Robert Bacchus.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you again. I wanna, um, I appreciate your, your comments and your consideration. Um, I just want to reiterate that my, my property is in this particular special assessment district, 2-22, and that I want to just make the record clear that my comments are applicable to this district as, as stated earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any email comments for Special Assessment District 2-22?
No, we do not.
Thank you. All right, not seeing any other, um, comments from the public. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions or ans, or, um, comments that have not been answered or stated prior?
I'm curious, I know that, that this one particular property in question does encompass like a significantly larger portion of the, um, the assessment. But are there any other properties that share a similar situation where maybe there's not an, or it's not, it's not an access point? It's not as, um, I'm still trying to better understand, like, the equitable nature of this, of this particular decision. I mean, I understand that sometimes there's just a way of doing things and, and, and policies fall into line for a certain reason, but, um, I'm just, I'm just looking for another example to compare this to, to try to, to try to understand how equitable this decision was. So basically, is there any similar properties in a similar situation? Maybe not by size, but by layout? Do all the other properties in this assessment have an access on the alley point, or on their alleyway access? A business or property access?
No, I would have to say Mr. Bacchus's property is unique to this in the length and the fact that this goes longwise down his building, whereas most all other property owners, this is in the back. Though, as was discussed earlier in the conversation, uh, the bank does own a significant amount of those properties that has, uh, uh, assessment very similar, if not the same, as that of Mr. Bacchus.
Oh, just on the other side of the alley there. Commissioner Ake?
Let's just simply say hypothetically, the city doesn't fix this particular segment. Would Mr. Bacchus not be able to use that alleyway? Does he actually use it at all? I mean, you know, if we're just simply being, uh, picky about what is fixed, and let's say hypothetically it's not fixed, then what happens?
I'm told that there are dumpsters back there, and also there's drainage problems from the buildings that will be fixed. And last week, when it was quite cold, the drainage from the building was in the alley, and it was a ice skating rink, is what I've been told.
So technically, it's, we're not just simply talking about surface structure. We're talking about underground structures, too. So whether or not he's using the alley that's surface structure, fixing it would benefit his area somehow. Is that my understanding? Because I'm trying to make sense of what's happening here.
I don't think he's denying that there's no benefit. I think it's just whether or not his cost proportion is proportional to his benefit. I think that was my understanding.
I, I understand, but the length of his property compared to the other ones is also in, is part of the equation here. If what my understanding is that the assessment is based on footage. So the footage of his property determines how much he pays. And is it my understanding that the amount is set multiplied by footage? Is that my understanding? Is that what we're supposed to understand?
Yes.
So i, in that case, therefore, each person is billed based on the footage multiplied by that set amount for everybody? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to reach some clarity here. So in that case, then, it seems as if, you know, if the city's policy is to charge properties based on the footage of their property, and it is a set amount that is charged each property based on that footage, by implication, everybody is paying what they're supposed to pay. So whether or not they're using the surface or not, you know, whether or not they're using the surface. I think that's what I'm hearing here.
Manager of Dissents, when was the last time this, um, alley was redone? Do we have any idea?
Just give me a moment, unless Finance Director Kornexel knows offhand. I could try to take a look real quick here.
Thank you.
I do not have that right offhand. I can text Stacy and see.
Yeah, unfortunately, I do not have that either.
Because I know that the alley is pretty, it's pretty beat up. They both are, they're pretty beat up. And I'm just wondering, is this something that we've not done in 10, 15 years? Is it something that?
Seeing if anybody has an answer.
Thank you. Commissioner Ronan?
Can I ask a question while we're pursuing the answer? I think the answer's important, I'm not trying to minimize it, but the, um, are there other models that have been used in other cities? I mean, it could, not necessarily tonight, but I mean, as we move forward, is, is there, um, is it always linear footage that's used for things like this? Is there?
I know that we've used that for this city for a while. I'm not sure how other cities.
But I'm wondering if there's some utility model or some other model we could look at to, uh, I mean, I, to be honest, this is not something I'm, I don't know what I'm talking about. But it, if, it, it may be that, that other cities have solved this in some way that, you know, could.
The only other way that I could say that I'm familiar with doing this is essentially taking your cost and just chapping it up by the number of users. Um, so that is something that I've heard of. I don't know, often, I can tell you often, though, when it comes to roadway, streets, those kind of things, those expenses tend to be by linear foot.
Okay, fair enough.
But, um, yeah, the, the only other model I'm familiar with would just be to take, let's just say it's a cost of $50,000, and then we chop it up between however many property owners we have there.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to do that. I, I, I value my.
But then if you do that, you would also have people who say they have very small property and that it's not equitable. So, you know, this is a conundrum. So you've got huge structures, and if you're using footage, then the, the amount of your footage determines what, how much of that space or, you know, what, what is allocated or allotted to you. We may have to revisit this and figure out what to do. But at this moment, it seems to me as if, um, you know, the city's, you know, the, the city's policy seems to be consistent, at least now. If it is charged and according to footages, then that's what, you know, what is determining who is paying what.
You see, the city engineer indicates that the, um, other alley, 1-22, has been at least 40 years, and she isn't exactly sure when this last, when this alley has been worked on. She also indicated that there are two parking spaces next to Mr. Bacchus's, um, building that are accessed from the alley.
I, I apologize, I, when was that last done?
The other one was 40 years ago.
Yeah, okay, I'm done.
Commissioner Asman?
Uh, the parking spaces, who was that? Are they Mr. Bacchus's parking spaces?
I believe so.
And I was just wondering, if not, then how are they not included in this assessment?
Can we make sure, can we verify that the parking spaces are Mr. Bacchus's parking spaces?
I will ask her.
And how does one access those parking spaces? I'm going to assume through the alley?
Well, I can say, looking at the map, yeah, the parking spaces would be accessed through the alley, and they do appear to be on the property of Mr. Bacchus.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alziger?
I move that we approve resolution five to approve the role and set the payment terms for special assessment District 2-22.
Second.
And we have a second? Clerk Val, can you please take a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Ake?
Yes.
Commissioner Alziger?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
No.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Pirschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. I'd like to state, I, I appreciate the commission. I appreciate all of the comments and questions. It definitely has given us some things to think about moving forward. All right, at this time, um, this is where the, we do announcements on related, city-related issues and new business. Do any commissioners wish to make an announcement or bring up new business that they'd like to bring to the city manager or staff? Commissioner Ronan?
Not that of random thought, but I've thought of it for a while, but, um, you know, these updates on police complaints that we get, I mean, that, as they were this time, there's zero complaints. I mean, and, you know, that's not an unusual state of, are they posted somewhere on the web so that citizens can access these or, or not? Or is there, I, I just, or it just seems, like, maybe they don't need to be, you know, it, it sort of indicates that, um, things are going pretty well, right?
Go offhand, if it's on the city website, I'm not particularly familiar with that. They are not, so. Yeah, we certainly.
I'm not arguing, I mean, if it's too much work, I'm not, I, I, but, or maybe just a monthly, um, annual, uh, you know, saying, they're just, because I, I mean, I, while the commission gets these numbers that there are no complaints, no complaints, no complaints, it's not clear to me how well they're transmitted to the community, but I, I But I I that's, I apologize. That's, that's, I I shouldn't, it's not a big deal. I I guess I just wanted to mention it.
Well, I think that um anything that we are, you know, um requesting
Good idea.
we need to be transparent with the rest of the city when it comes to things like that.
A good idea.
Okay.
Great.
All right, I would like to um let our local businesses know that we, there is another Match on Main program. Um, and you can receive that information from Middle Michigan Development Corporation. Also, that Art Reach is looking for individuals that are interested in creating banner art. So please contact Art Reach if you um would like to paint a banner. Uh, Wednesday this week, um Central Michigan University International Film Festival starts. Tickets are $5, and if you go to their website, which is cmfilmfest.com, you can find out where the movies are and what movies are out there. One thing I'd like to address to the public is that we have, you know, there's various ways that the public can get involved with the city. At our city webpage, which is mt hyphen pleasant.org, under the tab of um boards and commissions, you will find a list of volunteer boards and commissions that help run our city. If you find something that you're interested in, you can submit an application, you can uh do it online, you can come to the city and request one, or you can email um the Appointments Committee, which is Commissioner Alsager, Commissioner Ronan, and Vice Mayor um Simon, and they will be glad to help you with this. Of the, you know, the thing is, is that the more hands we have, the lighter the work there is, and the more minds we have, the greater our ideas are. Manager dissents, do you have anything to add?
I do, if I may. Thank you. Just wanted to inform the city commission that I have reached out to the owner of Taco Boy, Mr. Robert Baltieras. Following our last meeting, I did send him a letter as well as an email just to inform him of the city commission's decision to have the planning commission take a look at our drive-through stacking ordinance, um and to just let him know that no enforcement will be taking place during this time, and that if he had any questions, comments, concerns, feel free to contact me. Uh, another item I did want to update the city commission on is that I have been in communication with Representative Roger Hauck. He has been assisting the city in trying to correct a deed issue that we had in purchasing the Mount Pleasant Center property. Representative Hauck has informed me that he has been working with the Appropriations Committee Chair, which is Representative Albert, on having a hearing with that committee, which the bill is currently slated to uh go before. So that is House Bill five five eight six. Representative Albert had informed Representative Hauck that we would be trying to schedule a date here for a hearing within the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, we have some traction going on that very quickly here, and we can see some movement there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes, thank you. Those are all very important pieces of news, and I'm going to lighten it up a little bit and invite the public to Mount Pleasant High School's presentation of SpongeBob the Musical, which will be March 17th, 18th, 19th, and 20th. Tickets are $10 each, and I will be playing a pirate.
Perfect. Commissioner Eke, did you have?
I, you know, uh, this is probably to the city manager. It has to do with a peak program grant. May I ask a question? Okay, so uh perhaps maybe at the next meeting, you can talk about the peak program just a little bit. Um, and I also noticed that uh in terms of um the award, is it, you know, when you begin to administer that award, is it retroactive? Because my question has to do with the dates. Okay?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about both of those at our work session tonight.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you. Excellent.
Are there any more um comments, announcements, or new business? All right, so at this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Have we received any emails for public comment?
No, we have not.
All right. If you wish to make a comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address before you make your comment. If you're joining us, joining the meeting by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining by phone. Once you're recognized, you'll be moved into the meeting, and you can make your comment. Please state your name and address before you comment, and you will have three minutes for your statement.
Greetings. I'm Deb Carey. I have a business at 309 West Michigan, Consanos, and I just wanted to uh come in to say a couple of words. I'm excited about the workshop that you're having tonight on the marijuana ordinances, and I appreciate the extra time that you're putting into it. I want to thank Jacob Kane for his recommendation of reciprocity. This is a win-win idea. I want the, maybe the newer people to know um that you have community support in the changes proposed in Jacob Kane's agenda note. In December of 2020, I um sent the previous, or the older, sorry, the older commissioners, a uh informal petition that I received from our patrons and the downtown business owners. This was in support of considering transitioning the medical licenses to recreational. The small business owners were very supportive of my position and appreciated the foot traffic. The other petition signatures are from the Citizens Referendum, when we collected signatures for that. There's about 700 signatures in all, so you do have community support for to make some changes, both in support indirectly of a small business and in number. Over the past year, my son has provided the commissioners with um at least four of you uh with changes in the medical marijuana market. We have loyal patrons, and we want to continue providing them with education, with CBD products and medical marijuana to help ease their pain and anxiety. But they're not buying for their friends anymore, since they have, their friends have other options, and we have lost volume, and we just can't compete. And it's not because of our location, our service, or our products, or our price. It's due to the restriction on both the cardholders and the people who have the medical marijuana licenses. Three years ago today, I won the property lottery. And it would be incredibly sad for the first medical, or first marijuana facility to have to close due to these restrictions. Please level the playing field by choosing Jacob's recommendation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Do we have any other comments?
No one from Zoom has their hand raised.
Thank you. All right, I will now close the public comment. Um, we do not have a closed session tonight um for this meeting, but we do have a work session. The work session um discussion will include the city's marijuana, or medical marijuana facilities and adult-use marijuana establishment ordinances. If time allows, we will also discuss the childcare stabilization grant expenses. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, and then we will, we will come back to um begin our work session. We're at recess.
Formal, but due to the position of our seating because of COVID, I'm going to ask that I be able to acknowledge you before you speak. The reason why we do that is, a lot of it is because we can't really see each other. But our audience, our virtual audience, needs to know who's speaking, okay? During the work sessions, we give our understanding of the matter, our thoughts, and our possible lean, but we do not vote on the topics. So let's be open-minded, respectful, and engaged. Manager Dissents, can you please give an overview of the first topic for the work session?
I'd be happy to. Thank you very much, Mayor. So tonight, we are going to be discussing the city's marijuana ordinances. So within your city commission packet, you do have an extensive memo from, that is, the city clerk, as well as the city planner in it. It lists a number of particular changes that they are recommending related to administrative base changes to our ordinance. And if that would be something that the city commission would like to consider, we would like to know. And then moving forward from there, based on the initial philosophy of starting small in the city's experience to date with the implementation of marijuana businesses, is the city commission interested in considering additional licensing opportunities at this time? Perhaps, if it makes sense to you, Mayor, to start the conversation there to see if there's enough agreement on that subject before we move forward with the three different options that we have come to discuss this evening.
Okay, that's fine. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Any, Commissioner Alziger?
My first thought was, one of the proposals that was around this summer was called "Three is Enough." And as it stands, we have five establishments. And I think it would behoove us to do all we can to maintain that number five with five viable establishments.
I agree also that "Three is Enough" was in response to an initiative that was assigned to be on the ballot this fall, and then taken away by the "Three is Enough" litigation. And I think that frankly, the Citizens of Mount Pleasant asked for an opportunity to vote on changes, to vote on adding more. And they would, we should address that as a commission and give them an opportunity again to bring it to public consideration, to increase the number, in whatever way we discuss is feasible.
I would like to state that when we first began looking at medical marijuana and then adult-use marijuana establishments, one of the things that we talked about was that we were going to start small and then look at the data that was collected to see how it was received in the city and also see if there were any changes needed or any issues that were happening. And then COVID hit. And we had a lot of delays in some of the openings of the establishments. So I don't know how much of the data we have at this time, and if it is helpful enough. But we had never stated we were going to stop at three. We just stated we were going to start at three. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add, except that for the new commissioners, I really do view that what happened to be partially related to the pandemic, right? We had scheduled these things to be open. We had scheduled them to be discussed. And we thought that within a year, we'd have enough stuff going on. But then, you know, as soon as we did that, the pandemic hit. And it's really derailed a lot of what we're doing. But I certainly remember what the mayor said in terms of, the argument was stop slow, but not to stop at three. I don't think that was ever, we could have an argument, but that was not the model at the time.
Yeah, we had said that we would stay open. Commissioner Ake?
Given what I have just heard, I don't see a problem with revisiting that decision of taking a look at the possibility of increasing the number and how viable, you know, they may be. I think that in light of a number of, you know, the fact that COVID happened, your initial plan was not to restrict, you know, the numbers to three. And also, my understanding is that at least one business has two of those licenses. It is important to at least revisit, you know, the decision over how many licenses to have and possibly, you know, maybe take a look at a new structure or, you know, the possibility of thinking of alternative ways of handling, addressing licensing issues so that it doesn't appear that either one business or just a few businesses have monopoly of, you know, the licenses. I, you know, I'm not taking any sides here. I'm just coming to this newly. But I'm listening to you. I have been reading a lot on this. I think that it might be useful to just simply revisit it and then let's have a robust conversation about this and then make a decision.
If you decide to
open it up and allow more licenses, how do you determine who gets them? Do you move into another criteria like the first three? What if the business in town decides to then apply and ends up with four or five? Just curious, how do you?
If we were, I think, well, maybe Commissioner, or maybe Manager Dissents could probably answer this better than I can. But I think that if you're opening up more licenses, just like a certain number, then yes, you'd have to go through the whole process again. And you'd have to set up all of the different metrics. And everybody would apply new. But there are other ways of changing the ordinance and adjusting the playing field, so to speak. And I think that's what we're going to talk about tonight.
I do think that the question of revisiting doesn't preclude maybe taking a look at the criteria for licensing. Revisiting it means that we take a look at everything. That's what we need to do. You know, let's take it, let's just simply open it up. Take a look at what's there. Take a look at what is possible. Take a look at what we need to change or modify. The world has changed, so what do we need to do? You all have indicated, those of you who are here before me have indicated that your initial plan was not to stop at three. If COVID had not happened, what would you have done? You would have gone back and taken a look at what you have to decide what next. So here is the opportunity to do that. In other words, let's take a look at this with fresh eyes and see where we can go with it.
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. To move the, I think, conversation forward from what I'm hearing, and also to answer the question of Commissioner Asman, if moving forward in conversation on expanding the number of licenses is the way we want to go, there's a few different ways that staff has laid out that we could do this. One is to offer reciprocity between equivalent medical and adult license types. This would increase the number of licenses available, but not necessarily the number of facilities available. So therefore, let's say retail facilities who are able to currently sell medical marijuana would also be able to sell adult-use marijuana. Current facilities available to sell adult-use marijuana could also sell record, or medical marijuana. That would also, and could also apply to, let's say, some of the growers that we have as well, too. Whereas if you're licensed to grow recreational marijuana, you would also be able to grow medical marijuana. So that's one way of doing it. Keeps the number of buildings essentially, but allows them to expand in their markets within the business. Second way of doing this, as Commissioner Bush had stated, would be to essentially open up another round for businesses to come and apply for licenses. So similar to what we did a number of years back. Open it up and we say we have X number of new adult retail licenses available. And we would have the same merit provision in which people, companies would submit their applications. We would rank those. And then we would take however many times X number of licenses that the city wished to offer. Or the other idea is to allow new license types as well. So we could have designated consumption establishments, which are currently not permitted, or Class A microbusinesses as well, too.
Thank you. Commissioner Ronan?
Can I just ask a question, and then I've got something I want to talk about? If, let's pretend we did, I think it's called reciprocity. Is that the, you know, if we did that, how many, and I'm talking about just people who are, say, retailers now, not the growers or anything. But if we did retailers, how many would there be in the city at this point? There'd be seven? Is that what my?
Five. A total.
A total of, a total of five, I'm sorry. Thank you, Jacob. I appreciate it. A total of five. So is there some way that we could do a total of, you know, do that reciprocity thing? And then open up another license for someone and say that you'd still have to have both medical and recreational? So that we could do the reciprocity thing and take the final one and open it up and say, you know, this is open for bid or something, or is that?
The reason why we have five is because we have one establishment that already has both. Because we had started out with three medical and three recreational. But we have one establishment that has both medical and recreational. So are you saying that you would want to then do, after we give, offer the both medical or recreational, depending on what they have, offer those licenses and then allow for another establishment? So we'd have six total?
Yeah, obviously, I don't control this, but yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, I just wanted to clear.
Yeah, that's what I was, I mean, if we're setting a number at, you know, maybe we're not, or maybe.
Commissioner Alziger?
I like what you suggested as your first option to offer the reciprocity. So then we would, in essence, have five establishments with both medical and recreational.
That would be the measure I would support at this time, too.
Director Loria, I have a question for you.
Me too.
What are, no, you're going to have to move to the mic. Are there any concerns at this time in the city? Have we seen any increases of, usually what we're looking, looking at is increases in like driving under the influence or anything like that?
I wouldn't say anything that is eye-popping or anything like that.
Okay. Yeah, because I've, I know that sometimes the logs are posted on Facebook. And I would search through those every once in a while. I've only ever found one.
Well, I think.
Where it was suspected.
Yeah, and I think that you also have to understand that typically, prior to the legalization of marijuana, a lot of it was focused on, obviously, alcohol in driving. And so the officers didn't have, had the training to be able to enforce it, you know? Or to tell if somebody was driving while high or under the influence of marijuana. But with the legalization of it, obviously, there's additional training and stuff. And, you know, I'm not saying it's perfect as far as what we're seeing, but it's, there's nothing eye-popping.
Okay.
That's the best way I can say it.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
That was my exact same question.
That was your question?
Yeah. If it was for not the local law enforcement.
Yeah, because that's what, you know, anytime we ever bring something into the city that is new and has a, that is controlled, you know, like alcohol or the marijuana, we always want to make sure that we are maintaining the city still at the safety standards that we expect. And it sounds like that's, we're not having any issues with that, and I appreciate your comments. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have. It has to do with the reciprocity. To me, it's troublesome to think about because of the current lawsuit that we have within the city from one of the medical facilities. It just doesn't sit well. It doesn't send a good message to me. If I don't get what I want, I'll sue you. And I don't know the resolution to that, but it just, to me, it doesn't sit well.
Yeah, I can understand that point.
Because what are we going to open up for the three that do have it? You know, they met the criteria and they got the license being to, or to one of the same company. I'm afraid we're going down a road that we're not sure the outcome.
Commissioner Ake?
It is, it seems to me that the idea of reciprocity is.
Can you move closer to your microphone, please?
I am doing the George now. It seems to me that the idea of reciprocity seems to be an attempt to at least address where there may be gaps in the licensing. And the city manager, I want to find out whether there are other areas where this reciprocity option, other cities that have used the reciprocity option. And if so, what kind of data can you provide us? I'm looking at it and I'm thinking that it is a possibility for us, at least, you know, to find a way of addressing what might be a potential need or potential gap in what we already have. And it does suggest that with this particular approach, that the number of facilities, what is it? It will not increase the number of total locations within the city, but it provides an opportunity for a sort of, what I'm thinking of as a balance. Am I hearing you correctly?
To answer your first question, I don't know of any other cities that have done reciprocity, but it's fairly new concept as far as marijuana licensing goes. So that would be something I'd have to research.
Okay.
Related to the second inquiry, I'm not sure I would call it balancing. I think really what I'm just trying to supply for the city commission is just an understanding of maybe some of those trade-offs. So if the idea is, you know, we don't want a lot of new facilities coming into the city, then reciprocity is one way where you could expand service to the market without adding to the facilities, is all I'm saying.
Okay, okay. Could you dig deeper perhaps and see where, you know, maybe next session, if we are still addressing this, where this might, where this option has been implemented? Thanks.
Commissioner Bush?
I just want to respond, and this is loosely to Commissioner Asman, but I was also concerned about this idea of whether or not a lawsuit felt like bullying. But I don't think, and it did feel intimidating. And I didn't want the city to be perceived as weak in any way. But I, I think that lawsuits unfortunately do have this like negative stigma attached to them. And there are times when they're necessary. And I'm not saying that this was one of those times by any means. I don't think by changing the, the ordinance, we're going to be admitting any fault or anything along those lines. It does seem like that this is a way to get your voice heard in a very, you know, high-stakes sort of business. And, I mean, there are lawsuits all over the state similar to this right now, right? Manager Dissents? And unfortunately, however much we don't like it, it's just kind of a way of doing business. And I do agree that we should be cautious about making sure it's not a pattern for the city by any means, but this has never been the case for the city of Mount Pleasant. So again, we're kind of navigating a new field right here. And it does seem like lawsuits are a little bit of a language of this business.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I'd like to again, make a pitch for the, a pitch for the six. Is that, maybe we can start, I'll get a T-shirt.
But the, you know, I'd certainly talk to business owners who are highly interested in the potential financial benefits of opening another shop in the city, so, you know, I, I'm just, you know, I, I think this, I guess I'd say that it weaves a nice line between both, we have reciprocity and then we open another one up, and, yeah, the people would say, let's open it all up and just start from scratch, right? I, I mean, there's, there's different voices in the city, and I, and I'm not sure this wouldn't be a compromise that would partially target both those, both those camps or something?
I, I don't think necessarily we need to jump right to like a full expansion, I, I think we would have to get feedback from, directly from, like constituents from the community before we did that, I'm not sure if it would mean a vote and an election or simply a public hearing, but I do think, I mean, the, the community is comfortable with five right now because we basically have five, and reciprocity would not be a huge change from what we already have, obviously still up for discussion.
Commissioner Ecke, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking a lot about sustainability, and I think that's part of the, you know, sort of, perhaps the undertone of this conversation has to do with what the city can sustain, and the, you know, city manager would be in a, hopefully in a better position to look at what is feasible, feasible, and given what we have, what the city, you know, the, you know, what the city can sustain. We, you know, we're, we're looking at a city that really doesn't have huge industries, there seems to be, you know, the market for this here, so what is beneficial for this particular city? The other thing has to do for me, as I think of it, is in terms of the people applying for license, for their license, you know, whether they have met the criteria that we're using to assess, to, to grant the license, and whether, you know, whether they can continue to serve and to, you know, to sustain the business. You know, because we do want to encourage, you know, you know, our businesses, we want to support them. I would hate to have a situation where, you know, we have so much that we can't sustain what, you know, we cannot sustain the businesses. At the same time, I would also want to caution us to make sure that we don't find ourselves limiting the possibilities of an economic growth, you know, in the city. In this case, I would go back to what I said earlier, it is important for us to revisit this. If reciprocity is the way to go, then we go that way. If reciprocity is not gonna work for us, then we think about alternative, you know, avenues or alternative paths, you know, to addressing this particular issue. It may be coming back and saying, we cannot sustain more than five licenses at this time, let's stay with what we have, or maybe we'll add one more as Commissioner Ronan keeps pressing, you know, back there, so, but at this moment, I don't even know. So, you know, I like the fact that we're having this conversation, but I do think that we have to, you know, take a look at this and do what is best for this city.
So at this time, we have two truly medical marijuana facilities, two truly recreational, and then one that is both. Yes? How can we gather some data from all of these groups and find out what, what is their client flow, how do they, you know, do they feel that they have more than enough, or they have not enough, or it's too much? I know that things change as we go, I know that, you know, because of the field that I work in, we have, you know, we have more clients than we can possibly serve, right? Do they have that problem, or is there just enough to keep them going? Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I, I'm not much of a businessman, but I, I think if you went to these facilities, they say, I mean, it's in their economic interest to say, loomers, and I'm not speaking to them, I've never been in there, but to say, obviously, we don't have enough business and we'd like to, anybody else opening a shop in town would hinder us and there's no market for it, and, I, I mean, I'm not, it, it's hard when you have businesses compete, so I'm not as worried as Commissioner Ecke is about, I'm not up for opening up the market and just saying, put as many as you want, and I, I think that's a mistake, but I'm also not in favor of trying to, you know, control the economy, or control the marketing of it, or control the sale of it, I mean, businesses work as businesses work, and I think it's best for the commission to stay out of that. That's what I've heard from some business owners saying that, you know, why is the commission working for awarding things to some people, why not just open it up and let the free market to follow the thing? I'm in favor of reciprocity, I wanna be clear about that, I am not, but I mean, I think going too far down this road and without letting businesses structure themselves, I think is, I, I, I'm just not comfortable with it.
I can say anecdotally that I went to Jars once, it was before balloon facilities opened, and there was like a 45 minute wait in the, in the main room, so we opted not to wait, and, and then my husband actually made a purchase in another city, so there's a, there's one story, so I, I think that it's pretty common for people to expect to wait and plan to wait because the demand is so high, but again, that's just anecdotal.
Commissioner Asman?
I have just a quick question, I believe Big Rapids does not limit anything in terms of a license, is there any way that we could gather some information from that as like a sister? I mean, I, I don't even know if I'd call Big Rapids a sister city, but-
I believe the last time I looked was just a few months ago, dated twenty-two recreational dealer licenses, and their population is less than half of our population.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, you know?
I'd just be curious to see how that effect has had on, on that area.
And that, that really does make me think of something that Commissioner Ecke said, and that is, I don't want Mount Pleasant to-
Yes.
Fall behind, and, I mean, I definitely still think, you know, we need to exercise a level of prudence here and, and, and do the due diligence, but that in and of itself is a, is a little hint of what's happening in the, in the market right now and what the market can sustain.
I would also put out the, when we looked at that data, those in the Rapids had the, I think, the second highest or the highest number of retailing per capita of the state.
Right.
They're nowhere near very much outlier, it's just unfortunate that it took out the road, so you think that that's an obvious pure city, but I think the Rapids is a big city, and those are two cities that are known as the sort of anomalous marijuana.
Right, but even so, that's just a huge disparity statistically, that's just, I mean, it's not, you know?
But it is important to do a kind of comparative study, that's what, you know, organizations do, when you're looking, trying to see what's happening in your city, you know, so what are the comparative cities to Mount Pleasant that may have licenses? Let's find them, and then CMU does that all the time, each time they wanna study what's, what to do with, with, you know, with CMU or at CMU, they look at other institutions that look, look like CMU or are lumped into the same category at CMU. So what are the cities that are comparative to Mount Pleasant that may have licenses, marijuana licenses? Let's look at what they have done, what is possible over there, and see how maybe we can model some of those structures here, or maybe we'll just look at them and say, okay, it worked for them because, who knows, they're close to some big city, but Mount Pleasant is not necessarily close to some big city, or they don't have, you know, a population that looks like ours, but right now, without that kind of information, you know, we might be working in isolation and also disadvantaging ourselves, I think it's important for us to do a little bit of research here. So anyway, that's, I'm gonna stop talking.
Commissioner Ronan?
Can I, yeah, we did, I, I wanna remind us that we did a fairly reasonable literature review back in, I, I forget the years now, but, you know, there's been lots of states that have had legalized recreational marijuana for half a dozen years, 10 years, eight years, I mean, Michigan isn't, Michigan's not the leader in this, right? And we did do that analysis of the impact on the local economy, the impact on police or legal issues, we also looked at the number of centers, I, I mean, that data's certainly there, I, I don't know that I need to do another deep dive into it, I, I don't think six is an unreasonable, or five or six or whatever is an unreasonable number, but, but certainly any commissioner who wanted to go online and look at the, you know, I don't know, six year follow up data, I mean, it's, it's certainly readily available.
Commissioner Asman?
Just a quick one, I'm not against marijuana in any way, shape or form, it's just so new, I don't wanna rush into anything. And, you know, I don't need a deep dive, but there, there has to be logic to me, you know? An informed decision, if you will, like, I don't even know the difference between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, I understand that you need a card to go to a miscarriage facility and anybody can walk into some of the other ones that are, but it would be nice to know the difference, what, what does one provide that the other doesn't?
Well, product wise, it could be similarly the same thing, what, the big difference could be how it's sold, and there is a little bit of a stigma with necessarily people who are taking or using medical marijuana, or using marijuana for medicinal purposes to go into like a recreational facility, it's better to go into a facility where there's somebody who can actually coach you in different strains and different dosages and different recommendations, and it's just a different atmosphere, but really, it's the same plan, it's just Fuji apples or, or-
Honeycrisp.
You know, honeycrisp, yeah, you're good, yeah.
Okay.
And then, and then how it's sold, and maybe some people like it in a pie, and some people like it in a juice, but yes, it's, it's a plant, it's just sold different ways and for different reasons, and the thing about a medical facility is they typically have more knowledge on the reasons why your grandma might wanna use it.
So there's more consultation?
Yes, yes, and, and that was one of my concerns about where we're at right now and why reciprocity makes so much sense to me right now, is because I'm worried about depriving the citizens of Mount Pleasant of an option, because realistically, because you don't need a card to go buy marijuana anymore, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot easier, and so you could just, just go anywhere, and you may not, and then these places that are, you were required to use a card at are just not being patronized to the extent that our, our recreational adult use facilities are, we're just gonna flat out lose that option for people. And that's, that's my concern.
Any other thoughts, comments, questions? So, Manager DeSens, what, what is your understanding of what we have all thrown at you tonight?
So to kind of come back, I, I hear a number of city commissioners who are interested in reciprocity, I've had some requests for more information, there was a really great pitch, Pitch for the Six, I just wanna say that, that was amazing marketing.
That was a joke.
But we did talk about that, so reciprocity, the concept of reciprocity and maybe additional licenses, that's what I'm hearing, and some requests for more information, you know, for those, for the, the sake of this conversation, I think the, the one dividing thing that I'm hoping to work, walk away with is, at a future commission meeting, or let's say the next time we discuss this, do we want more information, or do we feel strongly enough about moving forward with reciprocity? I'm only saying that because that's the one I'm hearing the most of at this time.
I don't get to move forward with information perhaps, if there's something, I, I liked what Director of Public Safety, Loria said, when he said, you know, there's no, what was it, there's-
Nothing eye popping?
Nothing eye popping, right, I mean, if, if the research identifies something eye popping, then let's, you know, I mean, I think do that, and if there's something there, then maybe it'll change, but I'd say we move together with both of them, but, you know, I, you know, I can listen to anybody else, too.
I would support moving ahead with, with reciprocity being on our agenda, and then maybe in a future time, exploring other ideas.
I do wanna make sure that we, the, some of the questions-
Yeah.
That have been asked, that we get the information and get the data that we've asked for.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I, I am interested in getting the information, we don't, I mean, if we get it ahead of time and I read up and I will be comfortable, you know, discussing reciprocity, I do not like engaging in, you know, making uninformed decisions, so that's where my concern rests.
Just to make sure, are we comfortable with the ordinance amendments that were proposed by the city staff on the first page of the memo? Pretty much all of that really is just to, just change some administrative procedure here, I could probably even turn it over to Jacob, but I believe even some of that is actually changed and reflected in state law, and we would be updating ours to match that, if I'm not correct.
You mean the spelling of marijuana? I wondered why you're spelling it like that, you know, what's going on?
There were also some time, time, like, timing issues addressed, right? Yeah.
Thank you. It was becoming distracting.
Are we spelling, we're spelling it with a J now instead of an H?
No, it's H U something. It's, it's our special spelling of marijuana.
What, I'm sorry, what page of our packet is that about the times?
Within the, I've got the PDF open, and I've got page fifty-eight of sixty-four.
Yeah, fifty-eight through sixty-four, so something like that.
Can you explain to me what this one that says, "For recreational establishments mirror the medical marijuana facility location transfer process?"
I'm gonna have to hand off to Jacob for that one.
Can you guys hear it without a mic? So under the medical marijuana regulatory ordinance, a facility location transfer and transfer process, under the adult use ordinance, that is a process of required, or location transfer, and the standards for that are very vague, and so recommending that that transfer, same for all.
So are you saying a facility would actually, like, moving locations, like physically moving locations, and the license moving locations?
Right.
Okay, so, since part of licensing distribution was based off of location, that confuses me a little bit, and I, and again, I'm just, this is brand new, like, this-
And that's only true for licenses that are separate from reciprocity.
Right.
So I know that the retailing vision, there's a, but that's the majority of city licenses are getting, or other licensed licenses.
Sure.
Others might in the future wish to move or transfer.
Okay.
Both of those processes are out of line, or, this is just one here, whatever reason the due process is still online, so we could wear those processes. We've done medical marijuana license transitions, had processes work very well, so we're just adjusting to that process, here for, in any source. Here, both are in the same source.
And you said right now it's a city commission decision and it's, it's kind of vaguely, the guidelines are kind of vague?
The ordinance doesn't provide a whole lot of direction on what that looks like or even how licensing or types of transfer.
So is it my understanding therefore that you are looking for uniformity across the two?
Yeah, this would essentially mean
That's what you're trying to do? Okay.
I'm glad to hear that there hasn't been a problem with this, with transferring of a, of a recreational location, or sorry, of a medical location. But frankly, I guess that surprises me a little bit since that seems to be one of people's primary concerns about location and that sort of thing. And, and that was part of our process of the metric?
Yeah, I think it's strange that the new location is still subject to planning commission working with the
Okay.
Previous location. So this is my current planch opportunity to just
Right, 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 sure.
It still would have to be a battle of the process. And the licenses, the location of the facility isn't subject to the public outset either. So it's, it's just a little strange that they come back to the city commission when you guys aren't getting in on the licensing and start to come back and say, we have permission to do something else.
Right. I mean, it does sound like more of a zoning board idea, but are, are, and there's gonna be regulations in place, like, it's probably not gonna be like next to a school or that sort of thing, right?
Yeah, we hope that these businesses will be in business for a long time and
Sure, sure.
I mean, I think that business is good one for
Right, right.
This just gives them that opportunity to say, I don't have a lot of marijuana.
But we're not looking at opening up the zones that we have set or the bear, the, the buffer zones.
I mean, that's a commission decision. I mean, and right now, whenever, whenever someone requested a transfer of a location, the planning commission is gonna have to scan it and
Correct.
Wherever it says that it's open to be and having that we might as well
So the planning commission gets to determine if they want to move it into a is that my understanding is what you just said?
I did hear the first part.
Is it the planning commission gets to make that determination?
Well, the new location would have to be one of the eligible others. And relocation, I suppose, would have to follow the standards of that facility. Just like it did at the original location.
That's right.
Bullet four. So what what's the explanation for moving the application window uh, from thirty, from one to thirty days? And I mean, one day, yeah, but thirty days. So what's the explanation?
Well, when we started for the medical marijuana ordinance, it's one of the things that we heard from other communities that are head of us in that process is that when they had a specific application they ended up having people Yeah. I think we all agree with that.
Go ahead.
When we went through the medical marijuana lottery, before those ordinances were adopted, we spoke with other communities that had already had their selection process. And what we learned is that many communities that had a single day or a short window ended up having people actually camp out in front of their facilities. And there were instances, there were all kinds of horror stories about what had happened. It was sort of like when you release a new iPhone and people get excited. And so with our medical ordinance, we didn't have that short window. And for what, again, for whatever reason, the adult-use ordinance was written differently in that respect. And so this is just one of those triggering events where if a license becomes available, rather than creating a chaotic situation in City Hall or outside City Hall. This, and this also, I think, probably puts the city commission in a good uh, or I should say the city of Mount Pleasant in a better perspective from the business side of things to say, oh, I'm sorry, you misread the thing, the deadline. The, the one day to apply was yesterday, you're here today.
Right.
There's a little bit more room for error there if weather interrupts or something else to make sure that people have fair opportunity to apply.
Okay, good.
Excellent.
For like a bed, yeah.
Yeah, excellent, good.
Are there any other questions on the change in tax? Jacob, thank you for helping us understand some of these. It was very helpful. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, these changes will come back to a commission meeting for a for a vote or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would have to set a public here, would we have to set a public hearing for voting on actual changes?
Yeah, we would take that through a full ordinance amendment process. So what I'm hearing though from this group is to get answers to the questions that we raised tonight. Um, that will move at the same time as we move reciprocity forward. And ideally, I will get you both of those things essentially at the same time, or if not, hopefully get the answers to some of the questions ahead of time. And we'll move forward that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so um, are we all ready to move on to the second topic for the work session?
Nope, yeah.
Nope, okay. I thought you were raising your hand.
No, I'm sorry.
Want to give our question. Okay. All right, Manager, Manager DeSantis, can you please over, um, give us an overview of that topic?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Uh, so we do have a couple of people here tonight. We do have our Peak Program Coordinator, Mary LaChance, as well as our Director of Recreation and Sports, Ryan Longoria. Really don't want to steal too much of the thunder, uh, because these two have gotten the city over six hundred thousand dollars in grant funds from the state of Michigan to support our Peak Program. Uh, in particular, we did have a question about the Peak Program, what it is, what it does. Um, and then also, we are here tonight to talk about how to spend those grant funds that I had mentioned that the team had secured. The team has put forward a proposal. They put forward two options, essentially either reimbursement for previous costs or sustaining the program and using the money going forward for enhanced scholarships. With that, if that's all right with you, Mara, I'd like to turn it over to these two to, again, go over the Peak Program and go over to the funding and the proposal that's before the city commission.
Yes, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight in regards to the Peak Program. Uh, for those who are interested in learning more quickly about the history of the Peak Program, it started in two thousand and one as a twenty-first century grant program that was federally funded. In two thousand and five, those funds ran out. At that time, uh, city staff put together a, a program that was able to utilize some school resources and it was a true partnership between Mount Pleasant Public Schools and the city of Mount Pleasant to provide after-school care at the elementary schools within Mount Pleasant Public School System for students um, and families looking for enrichment programming, um, academic help and, and some assistance there as well as just a safe and secure environment after school for children to go while parents were working. Since then, it's become a staple um, of, of this community and one that I know our, our department and our city staff and certainly the city as a whole, I think, is very proud of. One of the challenges that we've had over the course of the last fifteen, well, seventeen years now since that funding ran out was program funding. Comparatively speaking, our rates are extremely reasonable. Um, and we're very proud of that. And our ability to maintain those rates has been largely dependent upon outside grant funding, uh, mainly in the form of two percent grants from the Saginaw Triple Indian Tribe. With any program, um, at least certainly the way I've always operated, and I think is the smart way to do it, outside grant funding is not a sustainable model because that funding may have, it could run out and may not always be there. Um, and we've experienced this in the past and it's created a significant amount of challenges. And has been one that's caused some, some positive changes, I think, in the program. And when we first took a look at this in two thousand and fifteen, we really took a look at the program as a whole, how we're utilizing um, and allocating resources and funding, looking at a way to put this program uh, together in a way that still maintains the high level of care and standard that we'd set for ourselves and one that's expected from parents and schools and partners. And still keep rates where they are. And, and we've been very, very fortunate in that. The other thing I want to highlight is the fact that we do offer scholarship assistance. So any family who qualifies for free or reduced lunch through Mount Pleasant Public Schools also qualifies for scholarship assistance uh, with the Peak Program. This funding is um, through the state of Michigan Department of uh, Education and it was given out uh, seven hundred million dollars total is what this was uh, what was, was budgeted for by the state. That number came from every single licensed childcare provider in the state of Michigan with a guarantee that they would get that funding if they were to apply. So we took it upon ourselves to do that. Uh, it's been a challenging couple of years, I'm sure we're all very well aware. And we were awarded, because we do operate five licensed facilities here in Mount Pleasant Public Schools, we were awarded, um, each site was awarded a, a specific amount of money totaling approximately six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. If we are to apply for the second round of funding, which is gonna be structured the same way, a non-competitive grant that's gonna be available, uh, May thirtieth is the application deadline, one stipulation is that these current funds need to be spent. Um, one of the ways of which we can do that is to, and, and one of the things outlined in the grant guidelines were to reimburse yourselves for past expenses since March eleventh of two thousand and twenty-one. Staffing, rent, insurance, supplies, really just about anything. Uh, one of the other major goals of this funding is to retain staff. Uh, and it's also required, we received a separate amount that is required to be given to staff in the form of bonuses. That is a state Michigan, state Michigan mandate. We have to do that with that funding. Uh, but for the purpose of this, we took a look at the program, where we're at, where we hope to be, what we want to accomplish, and ultimately, what we're hoping to accomplish is long-term sustainability in the health of this essential service well into the future. And we feel that the recommendation we put forth is able to accomplish that.
Are there any questions?
Can you just give us a Sorry? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Can you give us an estimate as to how much of that grant could be spent on? Do we have that, do we have that data to review? About how much of that grant could be spent on past expenses, like reimbursement? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, that's uh, in reimbursement, if we were to reimburse, yeah, that was, I believe, around two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Mary, is that, yeah, yeah, we've got that, that number available. One of the challenging parts of that would be if that is to be reimbursed, where we're currently at in the tax season, that could create some challenges for families who've already applied for taxes and could also create some challenges for families who use flexible spending dollars on childcare.
Right.
Um, we've spoke to some parents who have children in the program, uh, who have told us they're not sure that that's worth it. That's not to say that that's not, I don't want to sway in one way or the other, but there would be some challenges associated with that. The other thing that we're hoping to do with this is provide enhanced scholarship assistance to families moving forward. We feel that's a way where everyone can truly benefit from this, not just the families who are currently in the program. But again, in the hopes of achieving, uh, achieving long-term sustainability, long-term program health, we felt this was a win-win for everybody involved.
And, and you can spend that, that way with like the promise of spending, like purchase order style or something?
We would have approximately fifty-six thousand dollars left over that we would need to spend for, by the end of May.
Okay.
And yes, that funding, we've, we've spoken with the um, state representative or the state's appointed grant representative to make sure that we were in compliance. Before we made this recommendation, we wanted to make sure that we were well in compliance with guidelines. And yes, the hope is that we can use some of that funding to secure some enhanced experiences over the course of this summer and into next uh, school year, which would still be in two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, I, I think you've addressed uh, my concern, because I read through this earlier and I wanted to find out whether you will be in compliance if you did not expend all of that money by the end of May. And you're saying that you have already talked to the granters. Okay, um, I do notice that. Okay, so how much does Peak cover special needs kids?
In terms of the amount of kids that we serve?
No, you do say you serve about three hundred kids a year or so.
That's in the summer. You have summertime upwards of three hundred per day for our six-week camp, um, usually over that. Daily, anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred children.
Okay, so um, does it, does this program also provide um, support for special needs kids?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Um, okay, that's good.
Yeah, that's always been one of the program goals, is to make sure it's very inclusive. And we've got trained staff on hand at every site to make sure that we have our special needs students well taken care of.
Okay, that's good. And you also, I, I mean, I am always supportive of, you know, grants, soft money. But I do think that you are correct that sometimes grants don't last long, right? You've got to find other ways of sustaining this. And it sounds as if you want to sustain this particular program for a long, long time. Because it has value, right?
That really is the ultimate goal, is to make sure this program does not go anywhere. And also, to make sure that families are able to afford it. And, and again, this, this accomplishes that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. Cool.
Commissioner Asman?
Um, just what it says, full and part-time staffing. Uh, is that like a I guess, could you speak to like how much they're, they paid on an hourly basis? Or do you have trouble with finding staff to, to cover these schools?
For, for what we're currently paying?
Yeah.
I would say, especially over the course of the last two years.
Like, what do you currently pay, I guess?
Currently paid, we start off at eleven fifty. Um, that's for brand-new staff and then it's a tiered approach depending on how long they stay with the program and how long they've been there.
Is that full-time?
That's part-time.
Part-time?
Yep. We've got currently one full-time staff, uh, myself, fifty percent of my salary is, is, is peak-related. And then we've got a part-time office professional, well, really, and then a full-time office professional who's uh, not paid out of the Peak Program, but that very much handles a, a lot of the Peak Program.
So everybody that's on-site is part-time?
Correct.
And how much do they make? Part-time starts out at eleven fifty?
Starts out at eleven fifty.
I was just concerned.
And in terms of uh, the competitive nature of things and, and the way, especially over the course of the last two years, things have gone, there are students, we, we rely heavily on students at, at Central Michigan University to staff this program. And we do know there's a number of them who have chosen to go elsewhere simply because nowadays especially, there's opportunity to make more money at those facilities. And our goal, one of, again, one of the many goals, but certainly uh, we want to have the best staff. We want them qualified. And we're putting um, community children in their care. So we want to make sure that we're able to pay accordingly and make sure that we've got the right people on hand.
Is some of this money, could that be earmarked to do so?
Yes.
To give them a competitive wage?
Yes, and, and also it can be used in the form of bonuses if we wanted to go that route as well.
Yeah, I saw that part. You know, just twenty-one thousand dollars for additional staff bonuses.
Yeah, that could also be used um, for the future if we wanted to, for example, our summer camp staff. Um, if we wanted to say you work an entire ten weeks or six weeks, whatever it might be, at the end of that, we would be able to provide a bonus should you complete the summer with us. And that might be a way to not just retain current staff, but also to attract new ones. And again, that was one of the guidelines. That was one of the um, main purposes of this grant funding was to make sure that providers were able to do that.
Mm-hmm. So um, a follow-up question then. Let's talk sustainability because you actually said that, right? Besides the grant and the two percent money, what other ways do you propose to sustain this? Clearly, the tribe is not going away, so chances are that you'd probably apply for the two percent money. And then how long, you know, can you rely on this grant? Outside the grant, what else, you know, might you, um, this particular grant, what else, you know, might you look at? You know, to sustain this, to sustain this program? And clearly, it sounds like you also might need um, some more permanent personnel?
Some more what personnel, I'm sorry?
Permanent.
Permanent.
Permanent, yes.
Personnel.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing from you. You probably are not saying permanent personnel, but that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, a majority of our students are Central Michigan University, or excuse me, a majority of our staff is Central University students, Michigan University. of our staff is Central University students, Michigan University, either coming from the Recreation Parks and Leisure Services Program at CMU or the Education Department. We've developed very strong relationships with both of those departments, which is a huge thing for us, I think, for the city and for Central Michigan University. So in terms of permanent staff, I think that's mainly our full-time staff. We do see regular turnover, which has created challenges for us because if we're not paying a competitive wage and we're not paying folks what they could get elsewhere, it's not going to be much for them to go somewhere else to find the funding that they're looking for in terms of wage increases. Sustainability, if we are to apply for the second round of funding, again, if we don't spend what we currently have, we cannot apply for that second round, which would be about the same amount. That second round of funding would need to be spent within a year and a half. So we've got a little bit more time there. The state, I don't think by any fault of their own or any mal-intent, it's, it has been challenging for us on such a quick turnaround to figure out how to utilize these funds. This would provide us some cushion and some buffer. And if we were to see a decrease or an elimination of any outside grant funding, we could get by for at least a couple of more years uninterrupted, without making any changes and have ourselves plenty of time to put a model in place. Again, reevaluate the program. Hopefully, we don't get into that position. But as we've seen over the course of the past seven years since I've been here, there is that possibility. And when it happens, it's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough pill to swallow.
Okay. Have you ever considered some fundraising, maybe?
Yeah, and we've, we've had fundraising. We've had a golf outing in the past. Ultimately, with a program of this size and this cost, whatever fundraising we did do was, had minimal impact, really.
Commissioner Allsager.
I just wanted to compliment you on using some good creativity on how to use funding in a short term.
Thank you. And I should also note that a lot of this credit, if not all of it, probably goes to Mary LaChance, our Peak Program Coordinator. We wouldn't be in this position if it were not for her, so. Kudos.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is needed, you know? This particular pandemic has made us very, very aware of how much childcare and programs such as this are needed. And even outside the pandemic, we do need to find ways of supporting and, you know, helping and making sure that we have programs like this for, for, you know, for people in our community. Thank you again.
Very welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you have the information that you need, Manager DeSantis?
I think so. What I'm hearing is a general consensus of support for, or at least, I think overall what I'm hearing is support for the plan that Ryan and Mary have put forward here to the city commission. We would come back at a future city commission meeting for an official vote on taking action on those expense items.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, we've made it through our work session, our first work session of the year, and it's not anywhere near midnight. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
So move, all right. We are adjourned at 9:13.